Thank you.
Clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Before we get to the public forum, I think Commissioner Smith has something that he would like to add to the meeting.
I would like to read a quote from one of our founding fathers. And this happens to be from George Washington. And he said, "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and to humbly implore His protection and favor."
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. We will move on to the public forum where it's a time where citizens may speak on any issue not on the current agenda. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? Good morning.
Good morning. Patrick Harrington, 100 South College here in Salina. A couple of things for the board. The first of which is just a general observation that some of the things that come publicly out of the board are wholly unacceptable, I think, in terms of public comment and things that have happened. And specifically with one member most offensive is Commissioner Price. And there's been, over and over and over again, since I've been in Salina, there's been a mouth there that just sometimes won't stop. And I implore this board to sanction, to censor, to fine, to do something within the power to moderate that mouth, that loose cannon, for the good of everybody of Salina and for the improvement of the respect of this board because it is an important thing here in Salina that this county commission does. So personally been offended by many of the things that he's said directed towards employees, some of which are in this room right now, especially during budget talks, during what was the dismantling, I think, of the county health department and the loss of some of the services that are vital to some of the poorest, most needy people in the city. We took away with, I think, wrong reason, and we've spoken about this before. So the first thing is just kind of, can you police yourselves? Can you police the board? Respect every citizen, respect every employee of the county. And this is a stressful time for them because you're going through budget cuts as are pretty much everybody in the state having to deal with what Brownback is feeding us or giving back to us. And a lot of people are under a lot of stress in county jobs. And I can just imagine, I have experienced that myself, and I've been on your side myself. I'm going to cut a budget and figure out what's going to go and what's not. It's tough decisions, so you all hold that, you all are burdened with that responsibility. But showing disrespect by commenting at somebody is, knows how to work somebody to get a raise, sorry, that you had to endure that. It was embarrassing to me when he said that. So specifically, Mr. Price, if you can't police yourself, there should be some way for the board to censor that output and moderate it. The second thing I'd like to ask for is that the board consider meeting at a time later in the day so that more people, I think we've been called needlers, can have a chance to participate in the county government because I think it's vital that we do.
Thank you, Patrick. Any questions?
No, thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. Your name is Mr. Harrison?
Harrington.
Harrington, excuse me. You started with an H. Some of his comments that Mr. Harrington expressed brings up a question that I had. You know, does the county have, Mr. Chairman, does the county have any authority to censure anyone on this board for any reason?
My understanding is no.
Okay, well, I'll thank you for clarifying that. Have a good day.
Anyone else at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission, item number one.
It's fiscal year 2016 public budget hearing and have comments by Rita Deister, our county administrator.
We have been working on this 2016 budget for several months now. We're now ready for the public hearing. Excuse me. I have up here some brochures if any of the audience would like to have them. Just sit them here on the table that kind of summarizes the budget.
I know you put a lot of work into that, so thank you for this.
Yes, you're welcome. Just kind of talk about some of the budget assumptions that we had. The property taxes are the primary source of revenue funding for county services. Property values are expected to raise 2.27 percent. Inflation and increase in service demands plus the need for increase in budget authority caused the need for budget authority increases for our expenditures. We expect interest on idle funds to increase slightly. Sales tax income may increase slightly. It has been kind of on an up and down spiral, and we hopefully this is going to continue to go up and not down. Siree steps in 2016 will increase by $1,000. Property taxed and lingering due rates have increased significantly in the past few years. And changing laws has increased demands and inflate expenditures for our public safety district courts and county attorneys. $800,000 for 10-year road upgrade will be reinstated following two years of not being funded due to building repair cost. And with the phasing out of the mortgage registration tax in 2015, we will lose some major revenue source. And then that was kind of the assumptions that we had in forming the budget. In summary, just to go over some of the high points, we have an increase in countywide assessed valuation of $12,254,590. Revenue generated from property taxes are estimated to increase by $540,115. Budget expenditures for road and bridge are 24.41 percent of the total budget, and this includes the special bridge fund. Employees sirees and benefits constitute about 50 percent of the total budget. We have a stabilization reserve amount of 8.24 percent, which had been established in the general fund. And this is in order to maintain a stable tax and revenue structure and to provide orderly services in case of an emergency. Placing 4.97 percent of the total general fund expenditures and non-appropriated balance plus establishing a stabilization reserve amount allows the balance in general fund of 13.21 percent. And this is 1.79 percent below what the Government Finance Officers Association recommends for our safety net. For the past year, a few years, the county has experienced a decrease in machinery and equipment and from the decisions that were made at the state level, and this has really brought down some of our revenue sources. And so that is our main highlights from the budget, and I'm open to any other questions.
I know this seems overwhelming at the time, but a lot of work has gone into this.
There is a lot of work.
So, you know, when the public kind of sees that we unveil this, I think, you know, a lot of meetings have gone into this. And I would encourage anybody for next year that has concerns about a certain area to please come to our meetings, you know, our budget meetings. We've tried to be as open as possible. We've tried to take, you know, as many suggestions as possible, so please feel free to be part of that process, including today. This is a public hearing, and we'll take comments, so. But right now, is there any questions of staff at this point or comments?
Rita, I just forgot to ask earlier this morning, will this be published in the newspaper before it's adopted?
It was already published.
So it's been, it's been in the paper?
Yeah.
Is it also on any, is it on our website and other online?
It is on our website.
And probably the other news medias?
Yeah. And anybody that wants to look at it, they're free to come into my office, and I'll provide them any of the information they might wish or desire.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And this little brochure is really pretty self-explanatory. It brings out some of the...
I would not recommend to everybody they go through the entire budget. This is, this is better.
It's like a phone book, like a New York phone book.
This makes more sense than the regular Kansas State required budget forms.
Right, I agree. And just as another point of clarification, I think it's a vote that we're going to have later on in item three, but we'll table the actual voting for the budget until next week, so comments are still very welcome. So if there's not any other questions of staff, I'll just, it's a public hearing, open it up to any comments that the public has. And we'll try to answer them, or we'll take your suggestions.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Rita, for all the excellent work you've done on the budget and trying to keep the levy stable. You've been working very hard, and I see that.
It's kind of my harvest time, this budget.
Okay. One final question here is that, do you anticipate a mill levy increase or decrease?
Stable, stay the same.
It's going to stay the same?
Yeah, stay the same.
Oh, that's excellent. Thank you very much.
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. As an interested citizen, I am appreciative of being able to observe the systemic process used to build the county budget. The process assumes that the previous spending by county departments is predictive of future needs. This seems to work for most agencies with the exception of the sheriff's office and jail. Given that public safety is 26 percent of the county's $39 million budget, or over $9 million, and given that there seems to be a historical pattern of exceeding the budget and needing to dip into strategic reserves by both the jail and the sheriff's department, I'd strongly encourage this commission to use resources at the Kansas Association of Counties and the NACO and other related organizations to find benchmarks of spending in comparable counties and measure Saline County's spending per resident against what is spent elsewhere. And I'll have a little bit more information on that for you next week. Just as Congress controls the purse strings of the executive branch, this commission needs to control expenditures for all county services. While developing a budget and setting spending authorities is one necessary component of financial management, true financial management is much broader and is completed throughout the course of the entire year. I particularly want to commend Commissioner Dave Smith for his involvement in the budget process and for his interest in building and establishing a better dialogue with the sheriff's department. That truly is commendable. I also want to recognize and thank the board for earmarking $11,000 to be spent on a salary study and for budgeting for a $1,000 increase in each step of the salary schedule. When people think of the county government, they realistically think of the individuals who provide the services. Just as we expect the county staff to work diligently on the behalf of citizens, the citizens want the commission to work diligently to provide a safe and rewarding work environment. If the county were to move to performance reviews, there's a need to consistently fund merit increases. I would encourage this commission to view finding, funding salary increases as a regular cost of government and not something to be considered if there's money left over at the end of the year. The Cedric County Commission made significant changes to their budget this year and saw standing room only crowds in their first budget hearing. In contrast, you seem to have struck a more conciliatory note. As best I can tell, the Cedric County budget, or Cedric County Commission has cut services not available in Saline County. I've heard that there's an alternative plan afloat to return $1 million in health department funding. This is cited as a quality of life issue, and I agree. While I will continue to be watchful, I accept that the 2016 budget reflects the general needs and collective input of those involved. So I would kind of tell you, well done to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? There is no vote on this public hearing, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, and we will move on to item number two.
It's a resolution 15-2172, property taxation policy for the fiscal year 2016 budget. Again, staff comments by Rita Deister, our administrator. If the commission desires, I can read that resolution at this time if you'd like.
If you would, please.
Sure, certainly. This is resolution 15-2172, a resolution expressing the property taxation policy of the Saline County Board of Commissioners with respect to financing the annual budget for 2016. Whereas KSA 79-2925B, as amended, provides that a levy of property taxes to finance the 2016 budget of Saline County exceeding the amount levied to finance the 2015 budget of Saline County, as adjusted to reflect changes in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the calendar year 2014, be authorized by a resolution adopted in advance of the adoption of the budget, supported by such levy. And whereas KSA 79-2925B, as amended, also provides that current year revenue that is produced and attributable to the taxation of, one, new improvements; two, increased personal property valuation other than increased valuation of oil and gas leaseholds and mobile homes; item three, property located within added jurisdictional territory; and four, property that which has changed in use shall not be considered when determining whether the revenue produced from property tax has increased from the preceding year; and whereas Saline County provides the essential services to protect health, safety, and well-being of the citizens of the county; and whereas the cost of providing these services continues to increase. Now therefore, be resolved by the Saline County Board of Commissioners that a levy of property taxes in support of the 2016 budget exceeding the amount levied in 2015 as adjusted pursuant to KSA 79-2925B, as amended, is hereby approved. And adopted this fourth day of August 2015 by the Saline County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you for reading that.
Certainly.
Well, as you are aware, the, in Topeka, they passed a law this year saying that come January 1st, 2018, you will have to have an election if you decide to raise more taxes. And along with that law, they decided that we needed to do this resolution now, not wait till 2018. So that's what the purpose of the resolution is, just advising the public that although there is no mill levy increase, there is a tax increase because the values went up. So basically, that's what the resolution is, is notifying the public, so.
Very good. Questions of staff? Public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve resolution number 15-2172, expressing the property taxation policy of the Saline County Board of Commissioners with respect to the financing, the financing the annual budget for 2016, as recommended by staff.
I'll second that.
So motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, closed. Passes 5-0. We'll go to item number three.
This is adoption of Saline County FY 2016 budget.
Mr. Chair, I move that we table the vote for 2016 budget until next week.
I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Passes 5-0. Item number four.
We have a road and bridge monthly update along with engineering. Got Darren Fisher, road superintendent here, and Mr. Neil Cable, county engineer.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This is a report on the maintenance division's activities.
Pull your speaker over.
June through July. You know, we did take delivery of...
Darren, you need to, still need to get it right up, right up there. Yeah, make sure that green light's on there. Yeah, thank you.
We did take delivery of a freight liner tandem axle dump truck that the commission approved in February, I believe. Nice looking truck. Sure do appreciate the addition to our fleet. The rural operators, we rented them a JCB backhoe. They were able to go out and complete some work. They replaced some interest tubes, did some ditch cleaning with the JCB and removed some culverts. They also, this is the time of year also, we do laybacks after the harvest time. We go in there with the motivator and we lay the dirt back out into the field. Finds a really effective and cost-effective way to clean the ditches. This here is Magnolia Road looking towards Bavaria. We did complete our dirt patching throughout the county. This is a culvert replacement on Cloud Street, just west of Kip Road. That work was complete. Every year, the engineering division does overlays, and we have to go out and repair the drop-off so that the people that live along there can get in and out of there without their cars dragging the bottom of it. With the, with the weather activities through June of being wet, when we couldn't work, what I did was I went and bought some pipe, and we built this salt sand spreader racks to make some room into the, in the truck barn. We did some asphalt repair on Gibson Valley Road here. You can see that miles from Rose Hill going south, it just kind of blew out through the harvest time. We had to go out there and do some repairs to it. Because of the rain activities, we had this, can't see this very well, but this culvert under Burma Road had washed out, and the road had actually collapsed. We had to go in and replace that. Very fortunate on this one, one of the sheriff's deputies noticed it before there was any damage to any vehicles. We did, did go out because of the rains and clear the drift. When we get two or three inches of rain, this is what happens at about 20, 25 locations throughout the county. And when the water goes down, we have to go out and clean all this out. So when it comes back up again, it does need out the structures. This, there's a picture missing. This is a picture of Humbarger Road looking to the, to the west. This was, we started, the snow on the ground. We started talking with engineering about this project in January. They had asked if there was work that we could do and work together to save some costs of the bridge, and this is, we cleared some trees and did the earth embankment. There's a couple pictures of that. And then some rock fell on the, on the ditch. And then we did some, some work on milling some humps and on Old 40 and...
State Street.
...in preparation for the asphalt road sealing. We completed 85 work orders for aggregates consisting 120 tons of sand, 495 tons of Lincoln Roadstone, 1,320 tons of crushed rock, and 1,097 tons of AB3. Our traffic control, they had 162 signs countywide that they went out and worked on during the June-July harvest time. They get real busy, the signs get knocked over from the trucks and the headers, and that keeps them busy most of the week, plus the, just setting up barricades for the work activity. That's the end of my report unless you have any questions.
Questions right now? Maybe after everything's over, but then we'll take public comment. I'll, your turn, Neil.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
This is engineering division activities for June and July. And in the interest of time, I'll just go through the pictures, and there's a lot more projects in here. I may touch on some of those as we go through, but we'll just start with the pictures. The first project is one that Darren was talking about, was kind of a joint venture between engineering and maintenance, the Humbarger Road Bridge replacement. And just, that's, that was the end of April. As you recall, we demolished the existing bridge, and that was collapsing the bridge, and we saved the abutments to the bridge. And that's actually the, kind of one of the final construction operations on the bridge. That's placement of the railing on the bridge. And then that's looking across the completed bridge, and then a couple of profile shots. Actually Darren took these, so they're a nice looking bridge, I think. It turned out a really nice project. So it started really the end of April, and July 23rd and 24th, they put the guardrail on it, and it was opened right in that timeframe. So it went fairly quick, not having to drive piling or...
Very quick.
Yeah. So it's, it's a nice looking structure. From, from every angle, it's a nice looking structure. So anyhow. Whoops. The second one here, this one's not completed yet, but this is under construction right now. This is the Thompson Road Bridge replacement. If you recall, we got $160,000 from KDOT towards this bridge. And we've, I've already turned in all the receipts to KDOT, so we've got $160 back in our pocket from, you know, the reimbursed, it's been reimbursed. So anyhow, just walk through it real quick here. This is working on the modifications to the existing bridge piers to receive the new beams. And that's pouring the bridge pier tops and just a few pictures. I'll go fast unless you want me to go slower. I enjoyed this, so that's... Okay. These, these are the K3 pre-stress beams, and they're fabricated in Newton, Iowa, Newton, Kansas, and hauled up here. And they're setting them in place and...
Limer.
Yeah.
Limer, really nice looking beams.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice looking bridge. And that's setting the K3s on the last span. It's a four-span bridge. It's 241 feet long, four spans, two long spans over the river, and then two short approach spans. These seem like dark pictures, but I don't think it was dark when I was out there. It's like 105 or so, but setting the beams and then this, this is setting the beams over the river itself, over the main channel of the river. And that, right there, all, all 20, there are 20 pre-cast beams on this one, and they're all in place. And then they're starting to set the deck formwork. And so the projected time now, the deck formwork's coming along real fast, and he's projecting to be ready to pour the deck in a week to a week and a half. So that, that bridge has come along really fast. They've got really, I think, till, the schedule allows till November 27th to complete the bridge, but I, you know, well, I was going to say it might be faster, but I hate to say that and the weather turn on us and it not be. But again, this one is, we're kind of joint venturing with the maintenance folks, and they're going to be doing the grading work on this when the, when the contractor's out of there. So just a few of the shots. And then the next bridge is the Wyman Road Bridge, which we've talked about a lot of times. This replaced an old 16-foot wide trust bridge that used to be there that was closed in 2007 and removed for scrap iron. And so this bridge is going to be 122 feet long. It'll be 30 feet out-to-out with a 28-foot roadway compared to the old one, had 16-foot clear width. Few pictures, that's the old concrete is kind of really, it's hard to call it concrete. It's more rock than it is cement. They've regraded the ditches, prepared the site for the new construction. And here, they're actually installing the sheet piling. Here, we, we couldn't use the existing foundations from that old trust bridge, so we had to build new foundations. And so they're putting the sheet piling in for the pier on the north side. That's looking down into the pier formwork, all the steel's set and the formwork's in place. Whoops. And there's the placement of the concrete in the north pier. And that's the north pier with all the formwork stripped off. And so they're currently forming the pier on the other side. So then moving on to, we've got one of our, we've got, right, currently, we've got 11 reinforced concrete boxes under contract, and we've got one of them under construction right now. This one's out on Muir Road, a tenth of a mile north of Hedberg Road. Reese Construction has this contract. That's forming the base. And there's all the formwork in place for the wing wall foundations and the, and the box itself and placement of the concrete. So many of these places are really remote out in the county, and few people ever see this happening, but there's a lot of concrete being poured in Saline County at any given time on a daily basis, people don't realize. So then, on the crack ceiling, the, the crack ceiling contractor did some, some additional work in June and July. It's really kind of past the time, temperature, time and temperature of the year that we can finish up the crack work, so we basically are going to wrap that project up in the fall when it cools off again. Because when it gets too hot, the pavement actually closes up the cracks, and so you can't really do the routing out of the cracks and putting the material in. So this is the work with, done in June and July before we kind of sent them away. And we're doing the... And we're doing the, always doing the inspection and inventory of the culvert pipes. We're up to 93 percent. Mark Turner has been spearheading this, and he's up to 93 percent of all the 1,100 miles of county roads in Saline County of inventorying all the culvert pipes. So, this is an effort we started several years ago, and we're approaching the end. We've also inventoried all the structures smaller than bridge length, which be less than 20 feet. That, that effort was wrapped up, and we're starting a new kind of countywide effort, and that's to locate all the section corners for, in the county. A lot of those were put, put in place when Saline County was originally opened up, and section corners were set, stones were actually put in place at all the section corners, and so we'll be locating all those all over the county, too, so those are located and we'll set. You, you can't locate a, a stone section corner with a, with any type of electronic device, so we set an iron rod so that all the section corners are locatable. And then I, just to wrap up here, we have a contract with Vance Brothers for the pavement sealing. That's $310,000, and that just started this morning. So, the Vance Brothers is, is sealing right now down on South Old Forty Highway. We do have some, we did do some asphalt work with APAC under their contract during June and July, but we still have South Old Forty, and I know there was a comment in the paper about why we're not doing that section of road. It's under contract, so it's from, they're in front of Phillips Sliding down to Minter Road, so that's under contract, and, and that'll happen here pretty quick. So, I think that's pretty much all I had.
Did, did you just do a finished la, overlay out there on Brookville Road?
Brookville, yes, on the north end.
Yeah, I thought that was done.
Yeah, yeah, that was actually in, in May, so it didn't show up in this.
Looks good.
I, I will also say that we're, we talked to you about the Mahan Road Bridge, and, and the maintenance folks are working very diligently on upgrading Mahan Road, so leading towards the closure of that bridge, so that's going along real well, I think. I don't know if Darren wants to see.
Should be done by the end of next week.
Yeah, it's looking really good. It looks very different out there.
That, that length culvert really looks good. I drove by there, just, you know, the equipment's still there, so...
We also, we went out for that Minter Road Bridge. If you recall, we, we applied for off-system bridge funds for that, and we've got the Lapsley Road Bridge. We got a, a bridge on Lapsley Road that's out for bids right now, to destroy that in.
Is that the one that's going to be moved off to the right of the one that's there?
Yes, yes, sir.
That, that looks good out there.
Yeah.
It's like you got it surveyed, or anyway, there's some...
Yeah, it's out for bids.
Yeah, looks good. That'll straighten that road up, won't it?
Yeah, it'll help with some of that dogleg in that road, yeah.
Further questions or comments?
Somebody mentioned earlier that the road out by the Hedville Trailer Park that we, is that Farley, or that we blacked out last year?
Pleasant Hill Road.
Pleasant Hill Road. They said there's some cracks in that, and they might want to stop out and look at it.
That we just overlaid last year.
Yeah, last year. They thought winter might do a little damage to that if it didn't get fixed, so...
Yeah.
I'm just passing that on to you. And we appreciate the public's comments of calling us and telling these things.
Yep, yeah, always.
It saves us a lot of money to get them fixed than let something get tore up, so we appreciate all the public's comments on road conditions.
Further questions or comments? Any public comment? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Move on to item number five.
Approval of county commission minutes for July 28, 2015.
Well, Minister Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of July the 28th, 2015, as presented.
No, I second that.
All right, before I take a vote, is there any public comment?
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I made some notes during that meeting. The agenda RFA items three through seven for the Community Correction Advisory Board were not in the July 28th packet. However, these items were in the previous week's agenda. By not including these items is assuming the public had the previous week's agenda. When no reference is made to the current agenda that the RFAs being discussed are in the previous week's agenda is confusing to figure out. The bottom line is any items discussed should be in the agenda packet of that meeting. I would ask that please include these items up for discussion in the agenda packet. It is believed the cause was because the RFAs were discussed in the previous week's county commissioner's study session outside public view, and it was assumed it was not necessary to include in the public voting agenda packet. This takes away from public comment when the item is voted on, and I would, that's just a protocol issue, and I'm, I'm thinking it was just someone didn't pick that up, but I was looking for those RFAs in the current agenda, and I, I didn't see them, so I was unable to make any comment if I wanted to.
Okay. Point taken, thank you.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission today? Any announcements, Ms. Fair?
Just like to remind everybody that the parade starts tonight down Santa Fe, southbound. They have moved it now, I believe this is the third year that they've moved the parade to the more cooler evening hours, and it starts at seven. There are no fair activities, I believe, after the parade. It will start tomorrow, and there will be things at our Expo Center and the fairgrounds on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, with I think the carnival being the last thing on Sunday. So, everybody get out and support our Tri Rivers Fair. I know the fair board people work very hard, and a lot of the, the kids that are in 4H have worked very hard all year long to showcase their things this week.
Very good. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming today, and your comments.